Good evening. I will call this meeting to order. If you will kindly stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, would you kindly call the roll?
Allenson. Harmandy.
Here.
Fishbein.
Here.
Laughin.
Here.
Regan.
Here.
Reynolds.
Here.
Tada.
Here.
Testa. Marone.
Here. All right, moving on to the consent agenda.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I just want to draw everyone's attention to 3L. There's a discrepancy between the memo provided and the bid document. The amount should be $215,000, which is what is on the bid document, but the memo notes $215. So just want to make sure everybody's okay with the $215,000, which is on the document. And with that, I move that we approve or accept consent agenda items 3A through 3LL.
Second. Okay, motion made in second. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes. There are no items removed. Public question and answer. Does anyone have a question for the council? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to item number six, discussion of old business. Janice, do you have an update on Hidden Brook Lane?
Yes, last night, the Planning and Zoning Commission voted to authorize the calling of the bond, so we'll proceed with attempting to get everything done.
Okay, perfect. And on to item seven.
Mr. Chairman, I move to adopt the total general fund revenue budget of $204,50,153 per the changes made to the mayor's proposed budget on the attached reconciliation details sheet for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2025.
Second. Motion made in second. Any discussion on the motion? Madam Vice Chair.
I just have some comments on the budget in general, so there's a series of motions on this. This is obviously our first motion, but of the mayor's proposed $11 million increase, the council was able to reduce by a little over $4 million. We had a path to save the entire $11 million, but some of those motions did not pass, so we stand where we are tonight. I don't think any of us is 100% happy with how we got here, but it's saving the taxpayers $4 million. I'm certainly not happy with some of what we did or the tactics used to get there. I'm not happy that some of the common sense proposals that I thought were common sense proposals did not pass, but I'm also not willing to throw the baby out with the bathwater, so to speak. So I'm going to support this budget to save the taxpayers the $4 million. A no vote tonight simply cost the taxpayers more money. All that is on the table now is an increase of $10 million or an increase of $4 million. What I saw with this budget process was the council using data to back up its proposals. I showed 20 years of data to justify using an additional $2 million of reserves that we won't use, as the data showed, but that motion failed, and I think that's unfortunate, as it's the people's money, and we had a great opportunity to give it back to them rather than to keep it socked away for the rainy day, which is now. I brought up the audit showing how much under budget virtually every department was last year by an estimated average of 3%, and yet, after last week's meeting, I've received emails and phone calls from some of those departments stating why they couldn't bear any sort of reduction to their increase. And some on the council agree with that, but I can't fathom getting upset about a 0.3% reduction with a $4 million increase, but then at the same time putting a $1,000 increase on a family's tax bill. Everyone should have had to give something in this budget. Every department, every agency that gets money, everyone. I see some selfishness on the part of some special interests, but little regard for the taxpayer that needs to foot the bill for that selfishness. Taxpayer money isn't a bottomless trough of money. People are going to have to make tough decisions to pay their tax bill this year, and I feel that departments and agencies that are mad about an increase because it wasn't the entire increase they asked for aren't recognizing the position many families in this town will be in due to their inability to give anything at all. So revaluation is the biggest issue in this budget. The mayor's proposed increase was less than 6%, and we got it down to about another 2%, if my estimates are correct here. So a 4% increase is not what I like, but it's not outrageous in this economy and with many town projects needing attention. However, the tax burden shifting from the commercial to the residential side is a major problem, and I think every department and the administration and the elected officials need to put all of our energy into this going forward. When we continuously say no to every commercial proposal because we don't want commerce or industry in our backyard, this is the effect. In the past couple of years, it seems that the only type of development this town encourages is housing projects, but what we need is more commercial development if we are going to shift the tax burden back to the commercial side from the residential side. So let's be more open to working with businesses that are trying to come into our town. We have four years until the next revaluation. Let's be clear, we are stuck with the tax burden being on the residential side unless we can rapidly grow our commercial grand list. I hope that we're all on board with that going forward. So in closing, what would I have preferred? An across-the-board savings where each and every department and agency had to feel some pain, just as the taxpayers are going to feel. I think there were some common sense, data-driven proposals that did not pass that I wish had. I don't really like the gimmicky bonding savings we proposed this year, but I'm going along with them for this year only in the spirit of teamwork and compromise with my fellow counselors and also recognizing that this year is like no other. The $4 million we are saving the taxpayers isn't as much as I'd like, but it's sure better than the $10 million proposed, and therefore, I am supportive of this budget. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Counselor Carvey.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just have a few things I want to say as well. Unfortunately, as Counselor Tada mentioned, this year's budget was likely the most difficult Wallingford has faced in decades, and we were dealt additional challenges when the state mandated that our property revaluation be moved up by a full year. That combined with a post-COVID surge in property values, a consistent shortage in housing stock, and a lack of significant growth in our grand list has created a steep increase in assessments for many homeowners. The pressure on families is real, and the concerns we have heard are valid. In light of those challenges, I want to commend Mayor Servoni and Comptroller Sina for putting forward a budget that was thoughtful, disciplined, and grounded in reality. It was a formidable starting point, not perfect, but pragmatic, and it gave this council a solid framework for discussion and adjustment. Over the past several weeks, we worked across the aisle to identify areas where cuts could be made, bonding could be used strategically, and the overall tax burden could be eased. And for much of that process, there was real cooperation. That being said, I am deeply disappointed that the majority party on this council took it upon themselves to target education with a $2 million cut to the school's proposed budget. That was not responsible. That was not thoughtful. That was a blunt attempt to gut our public schools. It would have caused immediate harm to classrooms, programs, and students across Wallingford. Thankfully, that effort failed. And I want to be very clear, the only reason it failed is because two Republican counselors, Counselor Fishbein and Counselor Allenson, broke from their party and joined the three Democrats in voting it down, and they deserve real credit for that. Still, even after that reckless proposal was stopped, the council majority moved forward with a $467,000 cut to the Board of Education's proposed budget. This comes at a time when our school buildings are crumbling, our test scores are lagging, and our educators are stretched thin. If the goal is to strengthen public education, then slashing funding is the exact wrong approach. Strong schools are the foundation of strong communities. They attract new families, support property values, and shape the future of our town. Undercutting them is not just short-sighted, it is destructive. We all understood that we needed to deliver tax relief in this budget, and we did. We made real and difficult cuts across departments, but it is telling that when it came time to make choices, that you went after education. Let us not forget, the most important function of local government is ensuring that every child in our community has access to a high-quality public education. That is the standard, and too many members on this council have failed to meet it. We do not have the votes to restore the $467,000. That fact alone tempts me to vote against this overall budget, but I also recognize the real and urgent need for tax relief this year, and I do not take that lightly. For that reason, I will begrudgingly support this budget. $467,000 is not $2 million, but the fact that we had to fight that fight at all is absurd. If we are serious about improving our school system, then we need to start investing in it, not hollowing it out. And to the majority on this council, I would suggest you follow the lead of your own mayor, our mayor, who demonstrated in his proposed budget this year that he understands the value of strong public schools and is willing to fund them. We should all be working to move Wallingford forward, and I hope the rest of this council will come to share that commitment, because the future of this town depends on it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Anyone else?
So very briefly, you know, the mayor and his budget talks that we're at a crossroads, and I think we are at a crossroads, and I think that if your wife calls you in the room and says we're at a crossroads, that's never a good conversation, right? That's the beginning of a very difficult conversation. And I think he understands sort of what's happening here with the lack of growth in the grand list. And so, you know, the education, every part of this budget is... There's someone behind every part of this budget, right? Whether it's seniors or kids, you know, I have kids in school. I understand the sort of the difficulties that the schools are in. I understand that we spent, you know, money to get a new central office. We spent money on boilers. I anticipate a lot of spending in the coming year for a variety of things. We're looking at a new high school, you know, so on and so forth. So education spending is something that has been... Well, it's easy to look at the small dollars of the 471. We've spent millions of dollars this year on improving schools and so on, right? Outside of that, I would like to say this problem, if we don't grow the grand list, it's just going to get worse year after year. So we have fewer students in school, the administration's growing, the teachers are shrinking, right? And so you're like, how do you address this issue? How do you manage that? And so I think the pain this year is just going to get worse if we don't get serious about how we grow the grand list. But I would say, though, I am especially proud of this council, especially the two new members of the council who I thought brought great ideas forward to try to work in a collaborative way to reach a better outcome for the taxpayers. I think that this council has been more thoughtful in this budget than we've been in the past in terms of really diving in into the issues, into the different parts of the budget. We had better, more fruitful discussion this year than we've had in the past. So I hope that that continues into the future. You know, I think if you look at the town charter, the way it was written is such that the mayor would be the one that wants to spend the money, and the council would be the fiscal restraint, right? And I think that for such a long time, we sort of were in a different dynamic where you had a mayor that didn't want to spend money, which sort of hamstrings the council. I think that we're sort of getting back to where the charter, the framers of the charter intended us to be. And I think it's sort of an uncomfortable place for a lot of us up here to be in a position where you want to put the brakes on certain things, right, when the mayor wants to go. So I think it's a learning experience for all of us, and I just see this council... I think I'm really proud of where we ended up at the end of the day.
That being said, anyone from the public wish to comment on this item? Mr. Vado.
Mike Vado, 377 North Elm Street. I'm probably a little too late with my list, but I think you should hear before you vote. You know, for 24 years, I've been on the board, and I constantly hear that the Board of Education takes up the biggest percentage of our taxes, 60-something percent or 60%. And I'm always wondering if anybody really knows why that occurs. We have the largest amount of employees of any other department in this town, and they go for... They have contracts every three years that we have to work out with them. If we don't work it out, then maybe it goes to arbitration, and that's going to cost you more money. But we fight hard if it takes us to 5:30 in the morning to make that contract go through without going to arbitration. You know, we talk about class sizes. The board gets all kinds of complaints if there's more than 21 kids sometimes in a classroom. With this cut, and I call it a cut, not a reduction, I think you're going to see some teachers go, and you're going to have more kids in the classes. So you're going to get complaints, and we're going to get them, and we're going to have to answer for you. Less sections of certain subjects may be offered if there's a cut with teachers. We have a lot of students with special needs and are outplaced for special services. In fact, that's how I got started on the Board of Education, because I had a child, I have a child, with special needs, and the Board of Education wanted to place these kids out, and they could not. Where they wanted to place my daughter was not an appropriate place. That's how I got started on the board. We have a lot of children who are placed out, and they need to stay out. That costs money, and that goes up all the time. Somebody mentioned a contingency account. Anybody sitting in here who's on the board or works in the central office knows Mike Vado does not want the contingency account cut. We never know what expenses are going to come up. We could have a special needs student move into the town, and it's going to cost us $40,000. Where are we going to get that money? It's in contingency, because the transportation is very expensive. Bear with me, please. We have special programs. STEP was one of them. Do you remember last year what happened when we were going to cut STEP? The people that were here? All the emails were received? At the beginning of this budget, it was somehow misspoken that the art programs were going to be taken away, which was not true. That whole site of this auditorium was filled with parents and kids with art projects in their hands. What are we going to cut? What are we going to get rid of to take up this, what is it, $500,000 rounded off? Who cuts the grass? Who mows? Who shovels the snow? Who fixes the curbs? Is that for me?
Yeah, that's your three minutes. That's right. Please continue.
Okay. The curbs, the driveways, anything in the building that needs to be repaired, be repaired. The Board of Education pays for it. We might sacrifice social studies books to put in new curbs or a new sidewalk at Sheen or at Lyman Hall or any other school. That costs money. That's extra money that we cannot put in a budget because we don't know if it needs to be done by the end of the school year. Oh, before I forget, and remember one thing, in 24 years... I'm sorry I'm pointing. I don't mean to point. In 24 years, we have never come back to this board, to this council, and asked for more money. Never. Millions of dollars we spend correctly, and we come out in the end okay. In fact, one year, we gave money back. Mike Vado was against it, but they gave money back, because we were like $400,000 over. We keep hearing pathways. We want children to be able to take our shop, some of the old things that we used to have in our schools that the Vital and schools like that now offer. Well, how are we going to do that? We need the supplies. We need the teachers to teach it. Well, there it goes. $500,000 is a lot of money that could pay for five teachers, maybe, to run such a program. This year, we came in with one of the lowest increases ever. We listened to many of you up there who said last year it was too much money that we were asking for, and your constituents were calling you up, and they were writing you and complaining. This year, 3-point-something percent, and we're still getting cut. I really want you to think about that before you vote tonight. Keep in mind, please, teachers. We hire the most employees of any other department in this town because they are needed to educate our kids. I hear people just mention low scores. We have to give them up. Well, you need teachers to do that and make it happen. And believe me, this board is trying very hard to make that happen. And I want you to think that we're complacent and just sitting back. So I ask you, before you vote, just think about a couple of those things I mentioned. There's probably a couple more, but I don't want to take up any more of your time. But thank you for listening.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Good evening. Tammy Raccio, 123 Chimney Hill Road. I first of all want to thank everybody for their efforts. This was definitely a very difficult year. There were some conversations I heard over the past weeks that haven't happened before. That made me happy. But I do also, having served on the board, there's conversations that I think still need to happen. I still wish that this town council approached the budget season like the Board of Ed. I wish that the conversations started sooner, the difficult conversations. For example, one of the things that the Board of Ed does is for their grants. I've heard conversation about grants and who does them and which ones do we apply for. But on the board level, if there's an entitlement grant, they budget for it. When they have an estimate, they put in their budget what they expect to get from an entitlement grant. On the town side, we should be doing that for all of the grants. LoSIP, and that's for local capital improvement plans. Right now, my calculation, and I could have missed an agenda item over the year, but from the carryover of 2024 to what was allotted to the town of Wallingford to 2025, there's $728,000 sitting in the state coffers for Wallingford. How is that going to be spent? This is the time of year the mayor can't spend it without coming to the council for approval. So as you're figuring out, take this off, put this on, how can we spend this? That's a resource you should be considering. There's a whole laundry list of things that can go into that, technology, other things too, not just roads. So please, add that to the process. Look at the funds that are outside of the actual revenues from the taxpayers. We need to look everywhere. In addition to that, the STEEP grants, and that's for Small Town Economic Assistance Program. That's a competitive grant. I wouldn't budget for that, but I do think that there's some due diligence that can be had about having a plan to apply for that grant every single year. Counselor Tada, you were talking about the facades and the back parking lot, prime projects for a STEEP grant that is involved with economic assistance and community-based. So please, that's a $500,000 a year grant. If you want to look at a town that does it well, it's North Haven. You can't have multiple years open at a time. You got to hit the ground running when the grant comes, finish it, apply again next year. That's another opportunity that we really should be looking at. And I totally understand where the cuts had to come from, but I also think we have to do a better job on the revenue side and transparency at this time, making sure that you know everything that's out there that you could be considering. Thank you again.
Thank you. Anyone else on this topic? All right, bring it back to the council. Counselor Testa.
Yes, I'm going to make a motion that we restore $467,172 to the Board of Education budget that was caught through the motions.
Second. Wait, so this is an amendment to the existing motion, correct? Okay. All right, so discussion on the amendment. Counselor Tada?
I'd like to amend the amendment that we add $2 million of revenues from the general fund to cover the restored education spending plus the revenue to the general fund side.
Okay, wait, so that's... So the original amendment was to add the education to the $461,000 back. I think what you're talking about is a separate amendment that's not really germane to the first amendment. So I think that that would be a separate amendment.
So the original motion is only about revenue, but Counselor Testa's motion has nothing to do with revenue. So my amendment to his amendment is finding the revenue to cover what he's trying to do.
Okay, I guess I see where you're going with that. So you said you're adding $2 million from the revenue line of the general fund to the revenue line of the budget.
I'll second that.
All right, so discussion on the amendment to the amendment. Counselor Fishbein.
So the original amendment was to allow expenditure, essentially, an additional expenditure of $465,000. So now what I'm hearing is $2 million is obviously more money than the 460-whatever, 467. What is being proposed for that money to be spent on? It has to balance.
Yes.
So, okay, but right now what we're dealing with is...
An amendment to the amendment, and I'm...
You're right.
Pointing out that you can't have a budget that isn't balanced.
Right, so it has to be an adjustment in the expense. Right, right, so, okay. That's fair. So Counselor Testa's motion is really out of order then, because he's making an expenditure, and we're on the revenue side. So I guess your motion, Counselor Testa, would be to change the revenue side by the amount that you intend to spend on the... Well, no, not really.
No.
Okay, so...
Yes, it would be.
Yes.
Maybe I should reword it.
Go ahead.
Let me reword it. My motion is to increase the revenue side of the budget for the Board of Education line item by $467,172. That would be the appropriate motion.
Okay.
I'm restoring that reduction. So that would be to restore it to the revenue side.
So, no, no, I see where you're going with it. Okay, so the only way... I see your objection coming, but so the only way to add the money back, because we did this, we're doing the revenue before we do the expenditures, right? So the only way to balance it then would be to add it to the revenue side and then make a second motion to add it to the expenditure side. Correct? Mr. Senna? Yeah, okay. Okay, so, thank you. And the second was from... Okay, and you second this amended motion. Okay, perfect. All right, now to Counselor Tada.
Okay, so my amendment to the motion still remains. So Counselor Testa's motion, I'm assuming, is taking... Would assume the revenue is coming from the general fund, because I don't know where else we would be taking it from, correct? Where is the revenue coming from? Are you raising taxes, or are you taking it from the general fund?
Am I raising taxes? That's sweet. Yes, I would be raising taxes.
Okay.
Get that on camera? Yes. Yes, it would be coming from tax revenue in the next motion, but, yes.
So my amendment to your motion...
Your amendment did not get a second.
It did get a second.
It did.
All right.
My amendment to your motion is instead of raising taxes to cover this expenditure, is taking the money from the general fund to cover it.
But that was for $2 million.
Correct, because we can reduce the taxes by $2 million by using that money, which we also discussed the other night.
I know it works. I just...
So it would cover...
There was a separate argument that we had had that...
Okay, hang on. Mr. Testa, hang on.
All right.
What is your thought? Counselor Tada?
So to fund your motion, we can take the money, the $2 million, from the general fund, which leaves the percentage we're using from the general fund at 0.1% higher than what was proposed in the mayor's budget, thus reducing the tax burden by $2 million and also restoring the education spending that you propose.
Okay, so Counselor Regan, so are you okay with the second?
Yes.
Okay. All right, so now on the amendment to the amendment discussion. Counselor Fishbein.
So I think, I just think it would be cleaner if the attempt right now is to address where the money's coming from. The overture, the amendment, was to raise taxes to make up this gap. The difference with the amendment to the amendment is the source initially. So I think, just to be cleaner, if I could, because that additional influx can be in a subsequent amendment, because then you're dealing with, okay, we got more than what we asked for. So, I mean, I know we can't amend, 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 you know, all that stuff, but... I just think we're getting into a place that, I mean, the initial opposition is the source. There's no, there's obviously, by the amendment and the second, there's no objection to giving the Board of Education the amount of money that the mayor had initially set. The difference initially is the source. The proponent says, "I want to raise taxes." The amendment says, "I want to fill that gap, but I want to fill it from reserves." Is that fair? Absolutely. Well, that's chairman's discretion.
Thank you for picking my language correctly. I appreciate it. Mr. Senna?
So, you know, the whole purpose of the other night was for me not to have to calculate mill rates and stuff on the spot. But if we're going to go down this road, at some point, I'm going to have to... But if we're going to go, go down this road, at some point, I'm going to have to leave to go make sure all this stuff works. But what I would do is leave it the way it is, but that's beside the point, that was a joke, sorry. Can, can we, can we table the first motion, work on the expenditures, and then when you got your expenditure number, then we can work on the revenue?
So you're, so you're proposing to add to item number two...
To do number two with...
...to the Board of Ed. And therefore you have authorized the expenditure of the total, and then we deal with where the money's coming from.
Correct.
Okay, I'll move to total, to table this item and to take it up after we work on the revenue portion.
Second.
All right, any discussion on the motion? Mr. Testa?
I want to apologize for my snarky response to Councilor Tada. That was uncalled for, I apologize for that.
No worries.
No, well, it was, it wasn't necessary, so I apologize.
Thank you.
Which one did you just table? Mine or hers?
Well, we're going to table the whole discussion on this item, this agenda item. We'll move on to the expenditure agenda item.
Okay.
So then your motion, then you could make the motion then to amend...
I appreciate that, thank you.
All right, so any other discussion on the motion to table? Councilor Tada?
Um, I just, to, to Mr. Senna's comments and on the motion to table, so we have the motions meeting, which was a, a procedure that was put in place before I was on the council, and the, the purpose of the motions meeting was so that everything, all of our amendments were settled at that meeting. It gives the comptroller a week to get the motions in order. It's obviously a lot of work, a lot of math for him to do all the calculating, figure out this list of motions. And in my time up here, it's always been that whatever happened at that motions meeting, that held. And then this, and then we have our final vote that night. So, um, I'm not, I'm not really sure why this year it's changing or why, um, you know, why we're going to end up doing this to the comptroller and, and changing the motions tonight that have already passed at last week's meeting. You know, it was, I think it was just always done, maybe it was just as a courtesy and we're choosing not to do that anymore, but I think the whole point of the motions meeting was always so that we didn't end up in, in this spot tonight. So I, I guess I'm not in favor of tabling this. I, I think we're, I'd rather just move ahead and I would hope that what we voted on last week would be honored tonight because I, that's, that's how it's always been done, just, I, I guess, I don't know if it was more of a courtesy and we're choosing not to do that anymore, but, um, I'm not in favor of tabling this, thank you.
Thank you, anyone else on this? I, I mean, so respectfully, the comptroller works for us and not the other way around, right? So I think the motions meeting was done in an effort to ease the burden on his office, which I think is appropriate, but at the end of the day, ultimately, you know, anyone can make a motion on the budget anytime tonight, and so I think we just kind of have to roll with the punches. So any other discussion on the motion to table? Mr. Laffin?
Yes, thank you. Tabling is just parliamentary or procedurally appropriate because it's, as Mr. Senna said, we should be discussing the expenditure side first, so then we know what to amend, if necessary, the revenue side. So the debate will be had, it just has to go in a slightly different order.
Any, anyone else? Mr. Fishbein?
I just wanted to deal, uh, I just wanted to deal with the procedure, you know, the, I think it was the very first year we put this procedure into place. I had made a motion at the motions meeting to give $1,000 to, um, planning and zoning in that area so they could have Wi-Fi access, and it passed. And then a week later, we had the, the meeting like tonight, and a motion was made to take it out. So it has happened before, um, I, not that I'm in favor of it, you know, I, because there was a subsequent, there was a couple of years after that where something like that happened, and, um, Mr. Bose, who was the comptroller at the time, he actually made a mistake with the numbers. And it was represented to us at the meeting that this was the mill rate and there was going to be a zero increase and all that stuff, and then we found out after the vote that that wasn't the case. So I'm very sensitive to the calculations on the fly sort of situation, but just wanted to give the historical perspective, so thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, anyone else? Councilor Tada?
So the conundrum I find myself in now is that I might support the motion if I knew that we weren't raising taxes to fund it. But if we're raising taxes to fund it, then I'm probably not for it. So if we change the order of this, I'm probably a no. Now, if I know that we're not raising taxes to fund it, we're going to take that money from the rainy day fund, then I may be supportive, so I just want to be clear where I stand. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Testa? Well, the motion right now on the floor is to table, so that's where, that's where we are. Okay, all right, so, uh, Madam Clerk, would you kindly call the roll on the motion to table?
Carmandy?
Yes.
Fishbein?
Yes.
Laffin?
Yes.
Regan?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Tada?
No.
Testa? Morone?
I vote yes, and the motion passes. Okay, so moving on to item number two.
Mr. Chairman, I move to adopt the total general fund expenditure budget of $204,553 per the changes made to the mayor's proposed budget on the attached reconciliation detail sheet for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2025.
Second.
Okay, so discussion on the expenditure motion.
I'd make a motion that we increase the expenditure budget by $467,172 into the Board of Education line item.
Second.
Okay, so motion's made in second, discussion on the motion. Councilor, uh, Fishbein?
I just wanted to give Councilor Testa an opportunity in his motion because we don't print money to identify a source, whether it be from new taxes or from reserves, um, because I, I think we need that information. Certainly, the comptroller needs that information should the, the motion pass.
Well, I believe Counselor Fishbein could cut us a check.
Sure. I don't know if it'd be good, but...
I'm good.
Get it.
You do the 4767, I'll do the $172.
Okay.
So that brings us back to, then we'd have to go to the first motion for the revenue fund, right? Is that why we tabled me?
Well, he's just asking...
Because I would, I, I, I appreciated Counselor Tada's comment that if, if we can potentially fund this increase in the expenditures by increasing the, um, appropriation from the general fund into the revenues, revenue side, that would avoid this adding, uh, adding to the, uh, revenue required from taxes. So to answer your question in a serious nature, I would, honestly, I'm okay either way. If, if this was acceptable and the majority of the counselors preferred that the revenue for this be generated from an additional, uh, appropriation from the general fund versus from the tax revenue, that would be great.
Okay, I think...
So I'm good either way, I just want to see this happen. And I'm good with whatever my colleagues choose to do on the revenue side.
With that information, Mr. Senna, if I may, um, there was already in the mayor's proposed budget, a anticipated transfer from reserves to fill the budget, and what was that original number?
So if you go to page nine in the revenue, it's, it's, the original's 9 million. So if this is the course you want to take, then you, you know, that's the line you're going to have to identify to add to, to not increase taxes.
No, and I'm, I'm just looking at the numbers, not the line numbers right now, I'm looking at the fiscal impact. So originally, in the mayor's proposed budget, he had asked for 9 million, which, um, historically was a, 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 a large number.
Correct.
And based upon the meeting last week, the council has already decided to increase that transfer, correct?
No, that, that did not pass.
Okay, ultimately, that number was held back?
It's still at 9 million.
Okay, so should this transfer come from reserves, it would merely be, and I use merely, it's subjective, right? It would be... I'll say merely, merely an increase of $467,000 over what the mayor had originally proposed. Okay, that's all I wanted to know, thank you.
Thank you, anyone else on this motion? And from the public on this motion?
Hi, Keith Massimino-Ridges. Quick question for the comptroller, I'm going to put you on the spot. 400,000, what does that mean in terms of rough, I'm not going to hold you to it, rough estimate per home?
Well, and Mr. Massimino, to your point, I think he's going to be, at some point, we're going to take a, if it passes, we're going to take a recess, and he's going to have to calculate the difference.
The point I'm, the point I'm getting at is...
Please continue.
We're literally splitting hairs over $20 a year probably per home, something very nominal. Raise the taxes, by all means, raise the taxes. We don't need to kick the can down the street more and pull more funds from the rainy day fund. Use the money, properly fund the schools.
Anyone else on this topic?
I mean, I, I would just say I would agree, I think long-term, I'm also curious...
I'm sorry, can you give me your, uh, your name and address?
Andrew Weinberger, 13-Pound Side Drive.
Thank you.
Um, I guess I'm kind of curious to know long-term what the plan is, because like, when I go on the internet and I listen to people kind of talk about the taxes that they're paying and taxes are going up, our taxes didn't go up for like 20 years. And our Wallingford public, who like loves Mayor Dickinson, and I don't know much about him, but I know taxes didn't really go up that much compared to other towns, how do we educate the rest of our town to be like, hey, we got it really lucky for 20 years, and now we're in this mess that we need to deal with? Let taxes go up, taxes need to go up, they've gone up everywhere else, except for Wallingford. I was just wondering what your plans are to kind of help that, because we're going to continue to have this mess until the public kind of realizes, hey, taxes probably should have gone up 20% over the last 20 years, and we wouldn't be in this mess. I just don't know what the long-term solution is, but I would say, find the 400,000, fund the schools, find more money if you can, because long-term, we're going to be in, not a very good place if we don't get this figured out. Thank you.
Thank you, anyone else? All right, uh, Madam Clerk, would you kindly... Oh, Mr. Fishbein?
Mr. Senna, um, over the last 20 years, have our taxes increased?
Yes.
And, um, in excess of 20%?
I don't have that number off the top of my head.
Okay, but, um...
I haven't even been here 20 years.
Yeah. Understood. How much money do we presently have in reserves that we would be tapping?
I can only go to the last audit, which I did not bring down here because I thought this was going to be just passing the motions that we did the other night.
Okay.
I can go up and get it if you'd like.
Do you, um, is it in excess of 25 million?
Of unreserved? No.
Okay.
I believe, I mean, I can try to look it up on my phone if you want.
Yeah, if you, if you could. I, I think it's certainly relevant, um...
Might be slow, I don't have access to the Wi-Fi.
The comptroller doesn't have access to the Wi-Fi, is that what you said?
Yeah.
I've got four bars, so I'm going to help you out?
What is coming from?
That's fair, but I'm not sure what I was to, you know, it's not really a...
Why? What are they going to do? Treat our kids to...
The camera on me this whole time? I'm getting there, sorry, it's a large document. As of June, the audit for June 30th, 2024, the unassigned fund balance is $22 million.
All right, thank you for that, that's all I had, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, or anyone else on the council on this item? On the amendment, um, Madam Clerk, would you kindly call the roll on the amendment?
Carmandy?
Yes.
Fishbein?
No.
Laffin?
No.
Regan?
No.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Tada?
No.
Testa? Morone?
I vote yes, but the motion fails. All right, so now on to, does anyone else have any, um, discussion, or any discussion or amendments on the expenditure line of the budget? All right, uh, anyone from the public, uh, on the expenditure line? Okay, Madam Clerk, would you kindly call the roll?
Carmandy?
Yes.
Fishbein?
No.
Laffin?
Yes.
Regan?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Tada?
Yes.
Testa? Morone?
I vote yes, the motion passes. Okay, so now, uh, we'll go, moving back to item number one.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we adopt the general fund revenue budget of $204,553 per the changes made to the mayor's proposed budget on the attached reconciliation detail sheet for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2025.
Second.
Okay, so this is actually taking up the motion that was tabled, so...
Point of, okay, yeah, I was going to say, point of order, we just pulled it off the table.
Perfect, all right, so, um, Counselor Tada, do you withdraw your amendment on this?
Yes.
All right, and Counselor Testa, do you withdraw your revenue amendment? Okay, all right, perfect, so now on the base motion, um, which is the revenue budget. Any discussion on this item? Anyone from the public? All right, Madam Clerk, would you kindly call the roll?
Carmandy?
Yes.
Fishbein?
No.
Laffin?
Yes.
Regan?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Tada?
Yes.
Testa? Morone?
I vote yes, the motion passes. Onto item three.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we establish the property tax rate for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2025 at 24.12 mills.
All right, motion made in second.
Do you want this for her?
No, that's all right. Um, any discussion on this motion? Anyone in the public? All right, Madam Clerk, would you kindly call the roll?
Carmandy?
Yes.
Fishbein?
No.
Laffin?
Yes.
Regan?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Tada?
Yes.
Testa? Morone?
I vote yes, the motion passes.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we adopt the budgets of the divisions of the Department of Public Utilities for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2025, as herein stated.
Second.
Any discussion on the motion? Uh, anyone from the public? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we adopt the budget of the capital and non-recurring expenditures fund for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2025 in the amount of $1,586,000 revenues per the council's proposed budget and $1,586,000 expenditures as attached hereto and made a part hereof.
Second.
All right, motion's made in second, any discussion on the motion? Mayor, did you have, uh, some feedback for us on this motion?
Yeah, I presume the council received the memo drafted by Attorney Small.
Yeah, I presume the council received the memo, uh, drafted by Attorney Small, and so my proposal in summary had been to, um, restore, uh, several of the items removed from cap and non to cap and non, moved the, um, the short-term use items out of the cap and non, the, the police radios and such, um, and then proposed to fund those via the remaining ARPA funds, and the net change, um, would have preserved the council's reductions. So, and I believe that's five B, is that correct, Mr. Senna?
So, the two things the council removed from cap and non were the, the lighting and the, sorry, sidewalks. So that's what's in the motion that you just made. The other motion that was provided was to add back three hundred thousand for the sidewalk, so that's the difference between the two motions.
Okay, so I will make an amendment then to add, to alter the dollar amount from the one million five hundred eighty-six thousand to the one million eight hundred eighty-six thousand to include the three hundred thousand for sidewalks in the cap and non. Is there a second? Okay, motion, amendment fails. Onto the item A as listed, um, any discussion on the motion? All right, anyone from the public? Madam? Mr. Fishbein?
I know your motion failed. I just, it, it took me aback for a moment, and, and I just wanted to ask, um, you know, that transfer, that comes from the electric division, right? We all know that. So, your attempt at a motion to add three hundred thousand, your, where were you having that money come from?
So the, the money in that fund comes from the, uh, from the electric division, and then we were gonna put in three hundred thousand from the, um, um, the fund balance, I believe, to, to fill that account. Is that correct, Mr. Senna?
So if you look at the stuff that was provided today, there's just two pages to it. Eighty-three, page eighty-three will show you where the revenue is coming from. So to fund the one million five eighty-six, that's less than what the, uh, contribution from the electric division is, so that's, that's where that money would pay, come from.
No, I guess that's the motion that's before us.
That's the motion that's before you.
The, there was an attempt at an overture of increasing that to three, adding three hundred thousand, and I'm just trying to figure, and I think the question was asking, is there reserves in that account that could be sucked up to make up that three hundred thousand, correct?
Correct. Yeah, that's what I understand your question. Yeah, and this is not a, something I'm passionate about, but this is, this, I'm, you know, to give it the, uh, some conversation, uh, yeah, because the administration recommended it, yeah.
No, I, but when you make, when you propose to add to a revenue line and you don't, you know, that arguably under the ordinance could come from increased taxes, it could come from reserves, like existing.
Right, so my, and my understanding was that that was coming from existing reserves, because that's what we talked about at the motions meeting, I believe.
That are in cap and non currently? Because I thought there was less than that, as far as a reserve, it was like two thirty or something.
So, Mr. Senna, maybe you can help us out, because I know we had a couple of projects that closed out, and there was some money left in the cap and non.
So, in the budget that was just adopted, there was money to supplement this to fund the mayor's proposal, that you guys did not touch, obviously, we wouldn't transfer that. But if you look at the document that I provided, we would be using the one million seven ten eight sixty-four, and this is page eighty-three, that's labeled five B, and then of the three ninety that the mayor was proposed to be transferred, it would only be one seventy-five, one thirty-six to make up the difference.
All right, thank you, Mr. Senna.
Okay, so, um, all right, so my amendment fails, we're back on the base motion, which is five A. Um, and, Mr. Testa?
Mr. Senna, you are proposing the use of the general fund to bring the fifteen eighty-six, one five eight six, up to one point seven one oh, basically, right? No.
The, the one seven one zero eight six four should be coming into the fund, but this has to be a balanced budget in there.
Right.
So if you don't have enough expenditures, I can't budget the revenue.
Right. I'm a little, sorry. The contribution from the electric division, um, has to be used for capital expenditures.
No.
Well, you're shaking your head, and I don't agree with that. And I don't know where, and I've read a lot of things that have been passed around, but are we using the difference between one point seven million and one point five eight six million for something else? I'm sorry I was here, but if I missed something, I'm sorry. But when I, when I was speaking in favor of removing things from the cap and non recurring fund to be bonded, I was, that was concurrent with moving other capital expenditures into this fund from line items that would have been paid for with tax dollars, but at no point did I ever suggest or agree that the one point seven million from the electric division pilot can be used for anything other than capital expenditures. So, can that be explained to me? I, I, I don't.
Okay, so, and we had a very long meeting the other night, right?
Yeah, we did.
No apologies necessary, but.
That's all right.
So in the past, this council has taken money that was existing in the cap and non and diverted the money from the electric division into the general fund to cover other expenses. So I, I, I believe, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mayor or Mr. Senna, but, but once it's in cap and non, then it's required to be used for cap and non, but the money from the electric division to the town is, we can dictate where that money goes.
Okay, when, when was that done? I was here. So, did I miss that year? Janice, did I miss this? I don't recall ever. If I miss it again, I'm sorry.
So we did it twice, and Mr. Shortell was the one that suggested it, and that's the only reason I remember, because he and I have had discussions about it, uh, in between. So that would have been, I don't know, four or five years ago?
So I, I recall twenty twenty, there was a million dollars for the pool, and then, um, there was some other, some moved in another budget year.
No, but a million for the pool is different. That's taking a million out of this and putting it into a little separate account that will be used for a capital expense. I do not recall us ever approving the use of that money for operational expenses. I don't recall that. It's never happened. It can't happen. It's not allowed by ordinance or charter, unless I'm wrong, and I'm really wrong. I thought I was wrong once, but I was mistaken, as the joke goes. I'm always wrong, anyway.
Can I make a point?
My point is, this is something I'm, I, I, I don't.
All right, Mr. Testa, Mr. Laffin has, he may be able to provide.
Yeah, no, sorry, Counselor, uh, Testa, I re, I remember, because I, I was vehemently against it. It was twenty twenty-one, uh, twenty twenty was, uh, money was put aside for the pool or something, I think, and then, uh, twenty twenty-one or twenty twenty-two, whatever. I, I found a news article after our late-night session, um, and I, I'm, I'm trying to bring it up again now, um, and I, I don't remember the exact mechanism. Uh, it was like a loophole, um, but it, it basically diverted, in essence, it diverted the money, um, but it did it in full accordance with the.
But what was the money eventually used for?
I don't remember. It was eight hundred and eighty thousand dollars, I do remember that.
It was operations? It could not have been operations. I just, we're not allowed to do it. I just don't, you, you, you can't.
I don't, I don't think Mayor Dickinson spent it.
All right, so wait, to get back to the, so the motion, the motion at the hand, uh, hand is the one and a half million in the cap and non.
Can, can I make one comment that I should have thought? Sorry to interrupt, but this might make it easier for everybody. The difference between the electric division pilot and the amount that the one five eight six is one twenty-four eight sixty-four, so if someone made a motion to fund the sidewalk program for that amount and increase the revenue, now you're in balance, you're not using any, any money. It's just, it, it equals the transfer. So instead of having the sidewalks come in at three hundred grand, if you do it for one twenty-four eight sixty-four, that will make the revenues, the expenditures equal the electric division pilot of one million seven ten eight sixty-four. Just a thought.
Okay, thank you. All right, did, did you understand what Mr. Senna said?
No, I'm sorry, because I was still looking for that stupid article. Could he say that again?
Mr. Senna, I'm sorry, could you repeat that one more time?
So, sorry. So, right now, the motion on the table, the revenue is for one million five eighty-six thousand to match the expenditures, but that's less than what the pilot, that that's coming over from the general fund. So instead of funding the sidewalk, adding back the sidewalk program at three hundred thousand, if you add it back at the one twenty-four eight sixty-four and increase the, the revenue by the same amount, then it's, the money coming in from the general fund from the electric division will match the expenditures in the fund, and then you're not using reserves, you're not using extra general fund money.
So moved. Go ahead, Mr. Fishbein.
Whatever he said, um, what was the number, one twenty-four?
It's one twenty-four eight sixty-four. So if you would increase the pilot division revenue by one twenty-four eight sixty-four, and the cap and non expenditures by one twenty-four eight sixty-four for sidewalk townwide, would solve the, solve the problem, I believe. That's what you guys agree.
All right, so I make a motion to increase the cap and non, uh, expenditure by one twenty-four eight sixty-four, to balance out the amount of money that's going into that account from the electric division this budget.
Correct.
Second.
Second, or second from Counsel Laffin. Okay, so discussion on this motion. Mr. Testa?
Well, technicality, did, didn't we already approve the revenues? So we'd have to go back and.
No, no, the, the, the motion was to approve both of them at the same.
Beautiful.
So it was one motion to do both for this fund.
Okay, Counselor Tada?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, Mr. Senna, this has no effect on the mil rate or any of the prior motions, correct?
Correct.
Okay, and why was this not one of the options presented earlier? So I'm just confused as to why, so we had one million eight eighty-six or one million five eighty-six, but now we have a third number, so.
To be honest with you, it's been a long week, and I just thought of it as we were speaking, or else, you know.
Okay, so how?
It just seemed to make sense why we were arguing, why we didn't use the, the whole money.
That happens. Um, so does this, if, if this were to pass now with this, with the amendment, does this also satisfy the memo that came from Attorney Small, or do we still end up with that issue lingering?
So this, this satisfies the memo from Attorney Small, because those projects are not in that, in the number. I already took them out when we got the ruling.
Okay. Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Mr. Testa?
Thanks. I think just, maybe this will help, maybe it won't. Um, m, my arguments have been about the one particular source of revenue into this fund, but by charter and ordinance, this fund can be filled with other money. So, like the transfer from the general fund, we could do a two percent subsequent, you know, separate tax, uh, et cetera, et cetera. I don't know if that helped, but, um, that's all.
All right, back to Counsel Tada?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I just want to be clear. So the effect of this, if this, if the amendment passes, is that we're going to have more sidewalks repaired, but we did not raise taxes to do so?
Correct.
Perfect, thank you.
All right, any other discussion on this motion? Anyone, anyone from the public? Madam Clerk, would you kindly call the roll?
Carmandy?
Yes.
Fishbein?
Yes.
Laffin?
Yes.
Regan?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Tada?
Yes.
Testa? Marone?
I vote yes, and the amendment passes. Okay, so now on the underlying motion, which is the one million five hundred eighty-six thousand plus the one two four eight six four. Um, any discussion on this motion? Anyone from the public? Madam Clerk, would you kindly call the roll?
Carmandy?
Yes.
Fishbein?
Yes.
Laffin?
Yes.
Regan?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Tada?
Yes.
Testa? Marone?
I vote yes, the motion passes. Onto number six.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the special funds of the Board of Education of the Town of Wallingford.
Sorry, what, what was the last motion?
So we voted on the amendment to add the one twenty-four eight six four, and then we voted.
Then you voted for the one seven ten eight six four?
Correct.
I'm sorry to interrupt, that was just, I got scared for a second.
You need to make sure.
I thought you did five B. Sorry, thank you.
That's okay. Uh, Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the special funds of the Board of Education of the Town of Wallingford for the fiscal year beginning July first, twenty twenty-five, as attached hereto and made a part hereof.
Second.
All right, any discussion on the motion? Anyone in the public? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstentions, motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the special funds of the Town of Wallingford General Government for the fiscal year beginning July first, twenty twenty-five, as attached hereto and made a part hereof.
Second.
Uh, any discussion on the motion? Anyone in the public? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, motion passes.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the Capital Appropriations and Force Reserve Fund for the fiscal year beginning July first, twenty twenty-five, in the amount of one million seventy thousand one hundred sixty-four dollar revenues and one million seventy thousand one hundred sixty-four dollars expenditures. This represents the amount as of March thirty-first, twenty twenty-five, which may decrease as expenditures occur through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five.
Second.
Uh, motion made in second. Any discussion on the motion? Public, Mr. Testa, you'll say? All right, uh, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstentions, motion carries.
And, Mr. Chairman, I move that we authorize the chairman to sign three copies of the finalized budget, two to be filed with the town clerk, and one to be placed on file in the Wallingford Public Library.
Second.
Any discussion on the motion? Anyone from the public? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstention, motion carries. Okay, and seeing no other business on the agenda, this meeting is adjourned.